We're sorry we're late. We actually started the meeting downstairs at 6:30 because we went into, we were supposed to start an open session, but we went into closed session to discuss a climate matter, which we're done with now. Our board president, Gary Grissin, is actually in transit for work right now as the vice president under our policy 210. I will run the meeting in his absence. So we're on to the fifth item in our agenda, right, Marian?
Yes.
Recognitions. How about if I read them? John, would you like to give them out today?
Yeah.
John, of course, Kristen, right? Marching band.
Yeah.
Teacher recognition.
The RB marching band earned first place for their appearance in the Brookfield Independent State Parade. RB has participated in this parade for over 25 years, and this year there were over 75 students and community members that joined us. The band passed in front of the reviewing stand and performed the RB fight song. It was this performance that earned first place this year. Congratulations to James Baum.
These are my drum majors. I just, they need to share because they did a lot of work too. Congratulations.
Good job, James.
So we'll move to student recognitions, but we'll stay on the music theme choir. An RB senior auditioned and was selected for the ACDA, American Choral Directors Association, North Central Division Honor Choir. This will occur in mid-February in Chicago. He was selected from a very high number of audition applications. Congratulations to Jonathan Wells.
And we also have our choir director here, Ms. Aubrey Prince. She's done an amazing job, and she's also the assistant band director, is that correct?
That's true.
Many hands. Welcome to being on tenure still. I'm just kidding.
So we're going to move on to athletics. We'd like to recognize the following 2017 fall athletes. Girls volleyball. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes, Thessara Kolbus and Lea Redkey. All-conference athlete Ruth Ruska-Kelly. All-academic athletes Joy Greco, Claire Swayatek, Georgiana Gomarsik, Olivia Laufen, Madeline Mihin, Audrey Santora, and Abigail Swayatek. Now, girls cross-country. All-regional athletes, all-sectional athletes Nadia Kazmars, Haley Jurgens, Tara Janey.
Any of them here?
IHSA regional individual results Tara Janey, champion. IHSA sectional individual results Nadia Kazmars, second, Haley Jurgens, fourth, Tara Janey, fifth. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Haley Jurgens, Nadia Kazmars, Cora Lutz, and Melissa Oliviera, yeah, Liv, Oliviera, Liz. All-conference athlete Tara Janey. All-academic athletes, pretty bright that there's a bunch of them. Natalie Beachi. Neela Kalanen, Emma Fortman, Emma Forberg, Zoe Jackwart, Sophie Jebb, Elizabeth Jurz, Paulina Linares, Jessica Mansion, Gabriel Nolan, Emma Pizana, Isabel Rurka, Gabriel Tarrant, and Molly Tracy. What place do they come in, in state?
Seventeen.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen.
That's very good.
One regional, tied in sectional, but the sixth runner actually made it second place. So they're actually sectional co-champs in 17th in state.
Great standing. Next, we have girls golf. IHSA sectional qualifiers Cameron Shaw, Gianna Rumaro, and Isabel Hughes. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Fiona Bush.
Fiona here.
All-academic athletes Isabel Hughes, Delaney Bryant, and Grace Larson. Now we move on to boys cross-country. All-regional athlete, all-sectional athlete, all-state athlete, all-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Jacob Wardzella. All-regional athlete, all-sectional athlete, all-conference athlete Connor O'Brien. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Jake Sagan. All-conference athletes Jason Noel and Ryan Han, or Hahn. All-academic athletes Evan Dunbar, David Keane, Zachary Pickton, Connor Raymond, and William Briollet. If I remember this, when my niece ran, to be all-state, you have to be in the top 25, right? So he was in the top 25, and how the team, boys team?
Yeah, the boys team for the second year in a row, and this is a credit to Coach Urick and Coach Forberg. They won conference meet, they won the regional meet, they won the sectional meet, and they were eighth place in the state meet. Last year they were 11th place in the state meet. So they've done a great job. They had a core group of five seniors, and they really did our school proud. If I can add one thing, this year there were basically no injuries on the team, and a lot of that has to do with the fact they're able to run on the track outside. So I want to personally thank the board again, being a cross-country runner, for their support and being able to purchase that track. And I want to thank the community too, because it's obviously our tax dollars doing the work. But it gives our students a chance to excel, and they'll remember this, you know, the rest of their lives.
Thank you, John. So, girls tennis. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Radislava Pribil-Pirdanak.
Did I say that?
All-academic athletes, a bunch of them. Jane Frank, Sarah Dornboss, Ava Collins, Rokio Diaz, Julia DiMarco, Sarah Gersh, Josephine Jacobs, Kathy Pribil-Pirdanak, Mia Spina, and Grace Taber. Next is football. All-conference athlete, all-academic athlete Anthony Walsh.
Good job, Ian.
Congratulations.
Good job, Ian.
Good year, too. All-conference athletes Nicholas Delnodel.
Del, Del.
Say it again.
Del, No, Del, right?
Del, No, Del. Sorry.
What position do you play?
I play the running back.
That's what I thought. Great job.
Thank you. Stefan Kaminski, Hunter Hughes, and Joshua Ricchio.
What was your position?
Oh, it was a tackle. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
All-academic athletes Ethan Clarkson, Vaughn Hilt, Jake Via, Zachary Via, Timothy Buckley, Christopher Doherty, Matthew Lambs, Andrew Murkle, Robert Murphy, Connor Pitts, and Riley Girls swimming. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes Chloe, excuse me, Chloe Wando Morello, Sarah Paluski, and Autumn Reshevich Schwir. All-conference athletes Sophie Bruno and Madeline Wenig. All-academic athletes Alyssa Schwartz, Tatum Bruno, Veronica Caravola, Shay Connolly, Michelle Jacobs, Abigail Regan, Maria Elarcon, Michaela Esposito, Claire Kawicki, Kara Nadvar, and Sarah Strube.
Madeline qualified for state, is that right?
It's coming up this weekend.
Boys golf. IHSA sectional MVP Christopher Robertson. All-academic athletes Maximiliano Alvarez, Joseph Connolly, Anthony Esposito, Scott Lagler, Charles Robling, Ian Roth, and Benjamin Schmidt. And last, and of course not least, is our boys soccer team. All-conference athletes, all-academic athletes, is it Ixtian?
Kristen, is it Ixtian?
I got it right. Ixtian Garcia. Carlos Tapia, or Tapia, Xavier Sanchez. All-conference athlete Oscar Rojas. All-academic athletes Robert Chaika, Azial Di Bartolomeo, Ryan Kodama, Kyle Paff.
Kyle's here.
Eric Hawfer, Michael Pitts, Joshua Rampf, Daniel Sessler, Josue Villalobos.
I'd like to congratulate again all the athletes, all the students, the teachers, the coaches. It was a great fall season. So again, I think on behalf of the Board of Education, the school district, the faculty, to the parents and all the long hours and time you put in, thank you again, and hopefully have a great winter season as well. So one more round of applause for everybody.
Everybody, of course, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to stay, but most of the time the students and parents like to leave at this point, so people are going to do that.
Now's the time to run.
When you're still video actors, you can hope to say, "Hey, just flash your kids some picture before they read," you know, and it would be very correct, and then it would be, because they would, it's not easy, you know, but you would just, and then it was after a kid.
Is the student association here?
Kids could come up and study their reception.
So our next order of business is the student association report. Do we have a downside student association today, or did they forget?
I don't believe they're coming.
All right. Are you guys coming? Are you speaking or no?
We are the freshman task.
You want to speak for student association since we got space? I'm kidding.
Are you here just to attend the meeting?
Are you here to attend the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
So you were recently nominated though, correct?
President.
Well, why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
Come on up and introduce yourself, yes.
If you're going to be in office, you have to be able to speak to the public.
So what are your names and what are your current roles and your future roles?
You can sit down if you'd like.
You can sit if you'd like.
Who are you?
Yeah, what's your name?
My name is Jessica Herrera.
Hey, Jessica, in what role are you in?
I'm just an officer.
You're an officer for?
Freshman class.
Freshman class, okay.
All right.
I'm Catherine Gliff. I'm the president of the freshman class.
Okay. President of the freshman class.
How's freshman year going so far?
Great. Just work.
Happy to hear that.
Catherine, where feeder school did you come from?
Howzer Junior High.
Okay, and Jessica, what feeder school?
The competitor. Gross.
Okay. Well, that's good. We're getting, everybody's getting involved, so.
Sure. So you are going to run for another office, did you say?
No.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for the meeting.
Thank you, girl.
Next order of business then is the president's report, and as he is not here, there's not a report from him, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Curriculum advisory council did not meet, no update. Facility advisory council, we'll be doing something with the facilities advisory council, I'm thinking in December or January. We met last week with the architect and our facilities manager, which is Joel Hatchey, myself, and Scott Baranek, to look at the life safety items on the last amendment that was passed by the board and the bonds that were approved to address the remaining $1.8 million of work and the three sections of roof that we still have some life expectancy on, but will need to address here before 2023. So we're putting together a plan on how we think we're going to do that work over the next two years, and we'll share that with the facility advisory council either before the new year or shortly after. Finance advisory council, you'll see your first read tonight of the levy. We sent the first draft to the finance advisory council a few weeks ago. We did a few tweaks to that. I'll go through that tonight with Mr. Baranek and myself. Personnel advisory council, no update. And policy advisory council, no update.
Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left?
No.
I have two questions. Did you finish the punch list items under the current?
The punch list items, so there was a big crane out in front of the school today off golf road, if anybody saw that.
I did.
They're finishing the roof punch list items. We'll hopefully have that done this week. And Scott, did they strike the parking lot? That was the only remaining one.
They have not due to the weather, temperature.
Has to be above a certain temperature.
Temperature in order to be able to let down.
So they've got to stay till spring?
They got some sod work that needs to be done to remove some of the dead sod on the, I guess that's considered the northeast side of the tennis courts.
So we're close. Do we have to stay till the spring? Possibly, because of the weather.
Possibly, yes.
Okay. And then the other, it's not really a question, but the bond, actual issuance, the bond came out better than what we anticipated?
I do not have that information in front of me, but the bond actually closed at a lower rate than what was projected at the board meeting. So it saved the taxpayers, I want to say an additional $200,000 approximately.
I thought you said 250.
250.
Okay. So I don't, I think everybody got that report, but we ended up getting a more favorable rate than what we're anticipating, so.
Was this expertise paid off?
Okay, then we can move on to the principals' report.
So we have convened a career committee consisting of a variety of different staff members throughout the building to begin exploring and planning two opportunities for our students, and so really looking at two subcommittees. So the first is exploring the possibility of creating an internship class and researching what other schools are doing, what structure we've had in the past, and what we would like to see moving forward. And the second is really focusing on providing more career exposure to students in general through career spotlights, which would be where students can sign up to listen to a speaker come in and about a particular industry, a career fair, and we have several other ideas as well. So that's the second committee. We're in the preliminary stages, but we're very excited about the number of staff members who showed up and are also really interested in helping, because this is a pretty big endeavor. There's a lot of work associated with it, and staff seem really excited to get on board and assist with that. So we'll certainly keep you updated along the way. Something new this year that we began last month, you may have heard from students, is called the Hangout. This is an opportunity for students to go to the cafeteria after school Mondays through Thursdays to meet with other students, to study or complete homework, or to work independently on their homework. NHS students from our National Honor Society are present on Mondays and Tuesdays to offer peer tutoring and extra help if needed. On Wednesdays, an English teacher is available, and on Thursdays, a math teacher is there since most math assessments on Fridays to answer any last-minute questions that students have. So we're really excited about that. It continues to grow, and hopefully it will continue throughout the, throughout the school year as well.
When you say, "How many students are there?" When you say it's growing, Kristen?
I mean, the first week we did it, we probably had three, four students, and now we're up to 20.
Oh, okay.
So it's really about, you know, sometimes students get apprehensive about, you know, going to a new place if they don't know, they don't know what to expect when they go. So having teachers encouraging them to attend, but then also students bringing along a friend who may also need assistance as well. I talked to you earlier about our podcast, and we now have two apps. We have one in the iTunes store and one in the Google Play store, so parents or community members can go right there and download it. Special thanks to Dave Fisher, who's able to research how to work with those two organizations to create our own app and get that up and running. So it's RB Podcast, and you can search it and download it for free.
Have you created another one? I listened to the first one.
There are three. We do one every month, so at the start of every month.
Oh, okay. I'll have to catch up.
Dave does a great job with our website and our Facebook page, and so we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Now you can go. I know you're looking at me at 7:30. Thank you, Dave. See, I wanted to give you some recognition, Dave.
I appreciate it.
We have two upcoming presentations for parents through Student Services. The first is the College Board presentation for parents and students tomorrow at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. This is a new presentation. It's an informational session for parents on standardized testing at RB, so that parents can learn how to help prepare and support their students through that, whether it be the PSAT 9, 10, or the SAT. And so Chris Hines is an assistant director at College Board, and he will be leading the information session tomorrow, walking through, parents through the resources at Khan Academy and how to link that to the College Board account. And so we're really excited about that, and we hope parents come out and listen to what he has to say. And then the second is a college planning kickoff night for juniors and their parents on Tuesday, December 5. And that's a great session too, because it's a panel of college admissions experts that provide a lot of helpful planning tips as students begin to think about the college application and the search process. Lastly, as a part of the principals' report, we have the Fall Athletics summary. So I'd like to invite our assistant principal of athletics, Tom Domino, to provide you some additional information regarding those reports, which start on page nine of the board book.
Thanks. I will try to update and fill in some of the gaps, but we just recognized, obviously, lots of the fall athletes in their all-conference and all-academic things. So again, in the fall, some of the things that will add to the report that you gave pretty good, I think we might have to come up here and help me next time. The volleyball team, a winning record this year, 1916, eight and four in conference, second place. They didn't go as far this year in the state playoffs, and that was a disappointment, but they had an overall successful year on records. Also, the girls golf team, seven and four, the first time they had a winning record in a long time, and two and two in conference. So we don't have a lot of conference schools competing, so right now it's a small conference of turnout for girls golf. The boys and girls cross-country, which obviously were just recently introduced and highlighted, and again, just kind of reiterate that the girls team, you know, won the conference and came in second technically in the regional sectional, but like we heard that they were right there, and 17th in the state final, which is a great team score, having the whole team go down, along with the boys then, who won the conference and the regional and the sectional, and eighth place in the state. And we did have a first-place junior conference team too, which bodes well for the future. And then Jacob was 22nd in state, which the top 25 runners would be considered the all-state runners for that year, so that's an outstanding accomplishment. Girls tennis?
For people who don't know about cross-country, there's only one class for cross-country, right? Or is there two?
There's three classes.
There's three classes, yeah, there's three classes.
Which one were we in?
We were middle two, we've been class two for a while, because then that's pretty much, you know, the enrollment breakdown's been that consistent, so. Yeah, so again, it's, you know, against really good competition, very comparable schools the way we have, so. And they all run down at Dead Weather Park in Purry, which is kind of the, I guess, the old famous place where all the runners know all the tricks and trades of how to get off and not get caught in the turn, and there's some.
Craig Virgin holds the record from, I think, 1972, is that Craig Bob, something to that effect?
RB alum, correct?
No, he's not, but he's a friend of RB.
Friend of RB. I know there was a Tide RB.
Nice with Jerry Butter.
Oh, there's always a Tide of Jerry Butter.
Continuing on girls tennis, nice record at 16 and 6, 6 and 2 in conference, which was a second-place finish, and they were very happy at being home on the tennis court, so they would all thank you for the process and getting all that implementation done out at the tennis courts, because it's obviously a very, it's a perfect course right now as far as the ground, the traction, and all the things they've had. They couldn't have been more happy with the playing surface out there.
Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Who won the conference for the girls?
In tennis, I believe that Wheaton won.
Yeah, Wheaton, that makes sense.
And they were, we were consistently, I mean, we're pretty strong, but obviously there's a couple players, when you get in the conference, obviously, there's some top players going against everybody, but.
Will we be able to hold the conference meet here?
We would be able to do it if we have it staggered a little bit. So five courts is a little bit shy of a perfect scenario, but it's possible if you stagger it and, you know, do the singles and doubles and a little bit.
With the lights.
And with the lights needed in case, time of year, because it does get late in the fall, obviously, for girls, and then the boys would obviously be in the spring. Football, you know, another run at the playoffs, a great record, eight and two, second place in the conference with a four and one record, and sophomores had a seven and two record. So again, a successful when it comes to looking at a record, which isn't always the end-all, but it does show that they're getting a lot of skills done and competing in their conference. Girls swimming, I know we, some comments were made that we are not finished yet. We do have one, Madeline Wenig is going to qualify, has qualified, and will be going to state this weekend, a neutrator and 100, breaststroke, and she's a freshman, so obviously a lot to look forward to in her career. The boys golf was fifth place at their regional. We had, their MVP was mentioned, was Chris Robertson. We had a nice year this year and was an excellent golfer. And boys soccer, it was a third-place finish in conference, and the sophomores were 13 and 6, so again, a lower level success rate there for wins and losses, so again, looking forward to that. Going into kind of the comparison with the numbers, our participation numbers this year in the fall were up slightly, I'd say a decent amount, 29 total students, which if you looked at the breakdowns, cross-countries and girls, girls swimming and boys soccer saw the biggest bumps. We had significant bumps of like eight, nine, or 12 or 15 kids. So that's a big bump when it comes to those sports. Every fall team competed at all the levels that we offer and we play against in our conference. Except girls golf was still at one level. We've only had a level competing for a few years in our conference. That's pretty normal. We don't have a conference that has two teams very often. A couple schools do, but very few compete with more than just a varsity team, so that was our lowest number. And then in the participation, like you said, overall, 405 students in the fall, which if you look at last year, obviously it's up on 29 kids or so, but the six-year average is about right on six-year average. So if you look over long-term, you know, it goes up and down, obviously it fluctuates, but it's pretty much what the average has been or around the max. We can obviously always take more cross-country kids at any time. It doesn't really change the dynamics of the sport, where the volleyball and some of the other things, you know, you don't have room for an unlimited amount. So I think in the sports like football and soccer, where the numbers are higher and there's more levels and more student involvement, we're pretty solid with those, especially soccer's been increasing. Football is a little bit of an up and down flow for all schools these days with the concern with health-related things, but our numbers were good. We, you know, did participate in all three levels, so that's looking forward. And then again, just a reminder, when you're looking at this kind of pay-to-play thing, that we try to report the numbers at a certain time in, you know, whenever we get to report together. So this shows how many are participating. There are some, obviously, that are maybe managers on this list, so they wouldn't be included in the pay-for-play, but they're included in the numbers of participation, not trying to inflate anything, just trying to get all the kids who actually play a role, whether they're actually a player or they're just because of an injury or some kind of other situation, they're still involved with the team. So those numbers, again, are consistent, and then, like I said, there's some wave students that come across each year, and that just varies on the climate and the economic condition within our community, so.
And then we also have some students that aren't payment plans too, correct?
Yeah, there's some that, you know, that will be.
We're still doing payment plans.
Hooked up with the business office, and Scott's, you know, office will deal with determining on the schedule and what they do, and that's kind of an individual process that takes place. determining on the schedule and what they do, and that's kind of an individual process that, um, takes place with the student family and the business offices as needed. Uh, questions, or?
Any questions to the right, left of Tom or, that's the end of your report, right, or Kristin?
Good job, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Board appreciates your service.
So then we're moving on to the Chief Financial Officer's report.
See, uh, Scott, why don't you, uh, go through the financials and I'll do the staffing report?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, at this upcoming board meeting, I would like to highlight the October two thousand seventeen financials that are attached in board book. Uh, the first two reports that you will see, um, are the same each month. The first one is the monthly summary report, of the revenue and expenditures for the month of October, followed by the monthly financial statements comparing last year's budget where we were tracking compared to this year's budget where we're tracking. Followed by our monthly financial statements is the revenue and expense report from ten-one through ten-thirty-one. There was a question submitted on board book page thirty-seven, um, in regards to, uh, staff development under Title One. Under this one, the original budget had a twelve-hundred-dollar placeholder in for professional development under the Title One grant. Uh, there is Title, there is plenty of Title One, um, PD money allocated in the current grant. There is approximately eighteen thousand dollars that is allocated within the grant to be used for professional development, that has been submitted to the state for approval.
Today, we just did that today.
Yes, even though it looks like it's over budget on it, there's eighteen thousand allocated for professional development.
So Scott, what we should probably do, what, to correct us in the future, why don't you, our placeholder should be a little larger than twelve-hundred if we put in eighteen thousand. So look back at a three-year historical.
And then I gotta work more closely with Kristin here to get a better handle on exactly what a closer dollar amount would be for the original budget to put into as the placeholder.
Thank you.
Following the revenue and expense report is the student activity accounts from ten-one through ten-thirty-one. Just a reminder, the negative account balances actually represent positive, um, balances in that, um, there is very few that are negative. And then the follow, the, the.
That are neg, did it?
That actually have a negative.
Actual negative balance.
A negative balance.
Negative is good on the report.
On the report, but the positive ones, there's, I wanna say there's only like two or three accounts that are running a slight balance on that.
Deficit.
And, uh.
Okay.
And then with collection and different fundraisers that come at different times, it fluctuates.
Okay, what's next?
The last report attached is the paid building rentals report for the first quarter. Um, just kind of highlighting how much revenue has been taken in, what expenses we have to pay out for security, um, maintenance, and various items that go along with the rentals to get our net profit for quarter one. And then it also has a breakdown of the facility space that's being utilized. And just as a reminder, this is for paid invoices that we have received. There were a few outstanding invoices that were still out there for Academy Bullets and BFCA, the football and the cheer. Those payments actually came in today. So I did receive three pretty significant payments from the Water Polo, the football, uh, BFCA Football and BFCA Cheer Association that would be reported out then, uh, moving forward.
What about Academy Bullets?
Yeah, they, I just received, um, I believe about a four-thousand-dollar payment from them.
Okay, that was the only, that was the only question on the pool, right? But you just answered that.
There was another one on the next page on the pool.
Was there one more on the pool? Is that dealing with the aquatics center?
The numbers don't seem to match between the two pages of the report.
With, uh, that's based off of what we charge, bases what the expense, the actual expenses are to come up with just those particular areas.
So the reason it's a zero on, uh, your bar graph and then two, two dollars on the other is that expenses paid?
Yes, you collect revenue and you made a payout though for those particular areas.
No, the, the first page on the top says facility space revenue, right?
Right.
The bar for the aquatic center says five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The next page on the first line says aquatic center and the first column says revenue collection and says two hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's, they don't seem to match. And I just pointed.
Aquatic centers, aquatic tech. I mean, yeah, I mean, it looks like it got, um, it didn't filter correctly.
Why don't you take a look at that and do an update for?
Twigged in, we could send it out on the Friday update.
I'll send it out for the Friday update. It didn't pull right.
So you're, you're pulling from that to create your bar graph?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott on the right, left? Okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay, the next report that I'm gonna have Mary Ann pull up is the staffing report. And this is something that I started with the Board of Education, uh, in my first year when we were dealing with the two-million-dollar deficit and, and how to staff our classes and how to, uh, work on, uh, an operating budget that was within our operating revenues. And so the first part of the presentation will just be Kristin, uh, touching on actual course enrollments. Uh, you'll see, you'll see a number for March enrollment. That's, that's when we started to schedule students and we finalized all the course signups that students did, and then where we are in October. The first, the reason that number twenty is used is one of the things that the Board of, and I put in place, uh, seven years ago or six years ago, was in order for a course to run, uh, we said they had to have a minimum of twenty students enrolled. Otherwise it needed board approval. And so that was one of the, one of the, for the new board members, that was one of the first ways we went through. I was, when I first became superintendent, was looking at, we had several classes that had under twenty students. And so when you're paying a full-time teacher and there were some student, there were some classes with ten students, eight students. So we were, we were, we, we created it that those classes may still need to run, but they should have board approval. The board should be aware of where those classes are, that they're just not ran, any random class that wanted to run could run. And so that's what the, the significance is, is the, the twenty that Kristin will highlight in her first few charts. Other than that, you'll see talk about caps, and I'll cover that, um, a little more in my, uh, when I get to the back of the presentation. But more or less what we tried to do over the last four years, as our financial stability improved, was looking at class sizes in core classes, which are like your math, your science, your English, uh, and we use our social studies here. So our core classes, um, and in those, we try to keep a twenty-five to one average, but I, you, you never can do this perfectly, so I always put plus or minus two. The teachers will tell you it's a lot closer to twenty-seven to one, uh, but we do have some classes that have twenty-three to one, because sometimes when you have a hundred kids signed up and you, you have to do three or four sections of a class, one might have twenty-eight, one might have twenty-two, you know, the numbers will vary. So that's the cap. So our core classes are twenty-seven to one as a max. Uh, our elective courses are thirty to one, uh, plus or minus two, so that's anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two. And then we do the same thing with our PE classes and our band classes. Their cap is forty to one, plus or minus two. And so those are marching band, choir classes, and our physical education classes that are not in the pool or, um, in a classroom setting like health. All right, Kristin, why don't you do the first part?
Okay, so the first chart is looking at the courses that, uh, had board approval back in March to run, um, that were under twenty at the time. Um, and so you can see, you know, what that enrollment was when we, uh, sectioned for that, and then where they're at right now. So that's the October enrollment. So you can see some courses stayed about the same, um, some increased. You can see pre-algebra this year, we had a big increase, um, so we had some, obviously about ten students transfer in, um, that were, uh, below benchmark and, and needed, um, some additional support with pre-algebra. And then we had, um, a little bit of drop-off in, in German too and, um, AP Spanish literature.
Actually, all these are better than Latin. I mean, we had some significant drops in several classes last year. Most of these are either up or a very small drop. So must have channeled people a little different or better than this year, huh?
Yeah, and the more often we do this, we can look at past trends to see, you know, okay, we sectioned at this number, but we typically have five students drop between, you know, now and, and when the school year starts.
Right.
So the more data we have to look at, um, as well as transfer data, um, you know, the more accurate we are at predicting. But, you know, there also could be any given year where there's a fluke as well. So the next chart is looking at classes that are only offered one period a day. So we only have, you know, one section of, for example, uh, Business Principles and Accounting. That course is only offered once a day, so we only have, uh, initially twenty-four students that were interested. And then you can see where our, our, our current enrollment is. So as you go down the chart, many of the courses increased or decreased by one or two. Um, you know, obviously the big thing that's notable is debate. And the challenge with these can often be, um, if two of these courses run at the same time, students have to make a choice. Um, and so what happened is there was some conflicts with debate, um, and so some students had to make a choice. And then we also had one or two students change their mind as well. Um, and so we always do our best to avoid that, but certain things like honors mandracles and, and debate, typically students will choose honors mandracles, they had to audition for that, um, and so that, um, students will have to go through that process.
But the same thing on this chart, you must have worked a little harder on putting these cha, classes where there's only one, so they weren't during the same period, because you had much less of a drop-off overall.
Yeah, Beth Augustine worked really hard on that and, um, you can look, use the computer to see, um, you know, how many conflicts you're at and then try to reduce that, um, before finalizing things. So yes, Beth worked very hard on that. And then lastly, the last chart is, um, courses that are only offered one period a day that are over our cap. Um, and so that's honors wind ensemble and marching band. It started at forty-six and it's now at forty-nine. But part of that is if you look in the other chart, there was a, a marching band class that was below the cap. And so part of that is audition and, uh, auditioning and putting kids at the appropriate level. So you may always have a, a class that's a little higher and a class that's a little lower depending on, um, the ability levels of the students.
So how is, is this still appropriate to ask? How is the music, uh, department doing here in terms of enrollments stabilized?
Thanks for coming, ladies.
Yeah, I believe so. Um, and I don't have the specific data in front of me, but I know that, um, you know, Aubrey Prince, who was here earlier, has done a great job of, um, not only in fine art survey, but also in her choir classes. And we've seen numbers start to go up with that as well. And I think, you know, her excitement that she brings to the musical certainly, certainly helps along with the efforts, uh, with the feeder schools too.
So when we brought back the musical, we did say that we wanted to try and pick musicals and plays that offered lots of parts. Are we still trying to do that?
Mm-hmm. Last year, um, Aubrey, um, for the first time since I've been here that I know of, double-casted the musical. Um, and she's planning on doing that again this year. So by doing that, you offer more students lead roles and, um, all she did was, uh, add one performance. And so then that way all the leads have an opportunity to perform on two nights. So yes, certainly. And then last year with Annie too, she also included, uh, an opportunity for all of our feeder schools, that were, I believe, in grades five through eight, to come and participate in the opening number as well, to hopefully then gauge interest, uh, when they come to high school.
Any questions for Kristin?
Do we go to the next page?
Yeah, next page. We have one more chart to go through.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So the next page is, um, a kind of a summary of the FTE by department last year, this year, and you can see the change. And then also, if you look to the right of that, you can see, um, the class averages for each department. And some departments have, uh, classes that fall into each cap, um, and some only have a forty to one, only have forty to one classes or twenty-five to one classes. So you can see what all of those averages are. And then if you look, um, on the bottom right, the overall class average of core classes this year is twenty-five point four one. And, uh, Wes had asked a question about the five-year average. I only have the three-year, uh, historical, and so last year, that number was twenty-five point eight. And the year before that, it was twenty-six point two one. So that number has continued to go down, the core, uh, the average core class size has continued to go down in the past three years.
Kristin, just like Scott's gonna update the, uh, the rental chart, can you maybe put a little chart on the bottom that has historical core class aver, is that what you wanna correct Wes with?
Right, yeah.
So maybe we could just put the overall class average for core classes, historical. So then they can see it instead of just trying to go off of memory, what you said, or trying to write it down real quick. Uh, if you, actually, you know, an easier way to do is just update your chart and when Mary Ann posts a packet, then board members can refer back to that. Okay? And the other thing to point out on this chart is the yellow, highlighted section. So when we talked at budget time, when we were approving the budget, we said we had about a point seven unused. We were waiting to see what transfers came in at, um, so we only had to use a point one of that. So we're still sitting at, uh, or actually, we haven't used any of it. So we have a point seven roughly in the budget that we haven't used yet, um, which should help with that deficit a little bit. The transfers didn't come in as strong as we thought. Any questions on this?
I don't know if I should clarify now, but on this chart, as you look at the required FTE under special education, on this chart, um, social workers fall underneath that. And on the chart you'll see a little bit later, we separate out social workers.
Okay.
So moving forward, we can certainly separate them on this chart as well, to clarify.
Okay, so the next chart that you'll see, uh, is our feeder school enrollment numbers. These are as of September thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, so I know there was one question submitted. Can we get to twenty, this year's numbers? That's actually, uh, these are this year's number.
Okay.
So what we do is Mary Ann sends out, uh, this chart to all the schools that are listed above. On the chart, they fill it out, and then we, uh, compile some of the following charts you're gonna see. So this, we just show this to you to kind of see what's being reported from the feeder districts that maybe come from the communities that you support or that you live in. If you go to the next page, uh, these are our projections. And so with Scott, if, uh, why don't you cover this page on how you come up with your projections?
Okay, using the feeder school chart, um, just before this, um, what I do is I take ninety percent of what the feeder enrollment is to get what I believe the projection's going to be for that incoming class. The current classes that we have in the school, we use one percent is added for movement with transfers. So it's kind of like on a diagonal effect, so if you look, it'll be ninety percent of whatever the eighth grade enrollment is. And then if you go on a diagonal, it will be one percent increase from what we have currently enrolled. And basically I just take that and project it out as far as I can to try to get an accurate projection using the feeder school enrollment on this to potentially see what we got coming for next school year.
And you can see from where, going back to sixteen, our act, projection to actual. We've had some, the last three years, I mean, in sixteen, uh, so fiscal year sixteen, remember, is, uh, how's that? That's, uh, fourteen fifty, correct? The school year?
Fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen. Uh, so you can see where we projected sixteen oh five, we had sixteen thirty-three. We projected sixteen thirty-two, we came in at sixteen thirty-six, we were only off by four students. Last year we projected sixteen forty-five, for this chart it's sixteen thirty-seven. And then next year we're predicting sixteen forty-two. Now, if you look at the bottom where it has our enrollment, the actual, meaning six nineteen in-house is because then we have eighteen students outplaced. And I'll go over how I kind of do that projection, uh, on the next page. So there was one question submitted, uh, you know, the number of right now, they don't line up like the sixteen thirty-seven to sixteen forty. So for consistency purposes, we could pick one date and pull that enrollment. So I know Tim had submitted a question about, well, on this chart it says. well, on this chart, it says we're sitting at 1637, and then on the next chart, it says our current enrollment is 1640. So I do that chart a week later, or two weeks later, so I have the registrar pull the numbers. If we have one or two kids leave, or one or two kids enroll, that's where the offset is. So we found exactly where the two or three kids are. So if the board wants for consistency purpose, we could set this on, you know, we do, we'd pull the numbers for that date, but it does somewhat change. It does fluctuate. So that was what was causing the inconsistency. There was also one question submitted about a projection for in-house for next year. I have that on the next page, and I'll go through how I, how I look at that. Mary Ann, if you could pull, if there's no questions, I'd like to go to the next page, unless somebody has any questions. So real quick, Scott's projecting a 1642 for next year. When I pulled these numbers on 11, I did this chart last Wednesday, Kristen, when we did this last Tuesday, so we were at 1640. So we're projecting that we're gonna stay pretty flat for next year. And so what you'll see tonight is the staffing recommendation next year, that I don't think we need to increase any staffing. And remember, we still have that .7 available. So let me run through this a little bit. It can be kind of cumbersome. The board members that have been with me for the last seven years recognize this report, and it's really helped us get our hands on some things, and it's really worked. So let me just walk through it. And I probably need to tighten up some of the headers here a little bit to make it a little more user-friendly, but Scott and I have talked about doing that for next year. I put Scott's name on this report so that he understands I'll be shifting this to Scott. But, okay, so up in the right-hand side, you'll see a box, a 1.0 full-time equivalent or full-time teach, employee here is five classes. So a traditional teacher is full-time when they teach five classes. The other definition, it's shortened just so everything fits on one page, it's abbreviated for Required FTE. Now, these are people that are, carry Illinois teacher certificates, Illinois licenses, but aren't necessarily in full-time, aren't teaching five classes, but are paid on a full-time equivalency. So that's like your social workers, your guidance counselors, instructional coach release periods, other things that are contractual, special education teachers, librarians. So those are your Required FTE. We swing to the chart on the left, where it says 1718 budgeted FTE. So in the budget this year, we have a budget of 104.3. Our current FTE that's being accounted for, for salary dollars in our budget is 103.6. Of that, we have 25.2 certified staff members that are what I would call required teachers, that aren't in five classrooms, but are required. We have to cover their cost, okay? So counselors, there's five. Social workers, there's two. Special ed, there's 13.2. Instructional coach release period. So we're paying that instructional coach as a full-time teacher, but remember, they get one extra release period. So we have seven of them, so a .2 times seven comes out to be 1.4. So we basically hire an additional 1.4 staff to cover those release periods of the instructional coaches. Librarians, we have one. ELL is a .6, so that's English as a second language. That fluctuates a little bit like special ed each year, but we've been consistent around .6. Credit recovery, that's a certified teacher we have dedicated to just help our fifth-year seniors or our students that are lacking in credits, that they cover the Apex Lab, and those students come in and do classes online, and then they have, we have to have a certified teacher in there, because there's some grading involved. Literacy coaches, this is an intervention that we started two years ago, I believe, maybe three. Literacy coaches are teachers that are, we, they're paid as full-time teachers, but part, portion of their schedule is where they're working in other regular classroom, teaching reading. So, and so they might have maybe three English classes, and then two of their classes are in, they're able to go to different classrooms and work with their students on reading strategies, or pull kids out and test reading, or work on reading strategies with the teacher. So that needs to be accounted for. The dean's office, we have one teacher who teaches four classes, and then a .2 of her schedule is to come and help with deans, covers, that's our female dean's assistant or assistant dean. And then instructional tech, so like our instructional tech, she has a .2 where she's in an English classroom. The remainder of her schedule is teaching teachers how to use the one-to-one apps initiatives, going in the classrooms, teaching technology, working with students on the technology. So we have about 25.2 Required FTE. If you go to the chart now, and the tab-
Can you ask a question before you go there?
Sure.
So they highlight the three for 2819 that are either changed, or you're uncertain of, like special ed and ELL, English's second language. That could vary dependent upon more than anything else, transfer students, or, or new students either. But the actual number difference between the current 25.2 and 25.6 is the .4 social worker, right?
Right, and I'll get into that in a second.
Before, the other one is, there's certified nurse. We don't show anything this year, and we show a zero for next year. I thought we had a certified nurse.
Oh, we do, but she doesn't, I need to pull that off the 2019. We have a certified nurse. We have a registered nurse.
Right.
If a person is an actual certified school nurse with the school Illinois license, they have to be paid on your teacher's certificate.
Okay.
So we have a registered nurse that has the ability to work in school and man our nurse's office.
Okay.
And we pay there under the, we have a part in our collective bargaining agreement, so that person is paid under the non-certified employees.
Okay.
So that's why it's a zero there.
I got it.
We, remember, the reason it showed up on HR is when Ms. Jackson was no longer with us, we didn't know if we were hiring a certified school nurse or a registered nurse.
Got it.
We actually had some cost savings by going the registered nurse route. Okay, so let's go to the top of the colored charts. So current enrollment is 1640. I corrected it, so we have approximately 22 students that will be in either credit recovery, outplace, homeschooled. So the other place that talked, on the other chart, when it said in-house, the numbers don't match. The reason they don't match is this accounts for the kids that are homeschooled or credit recovery. And maybe take one class here, or part of that, .2 for the fifth-year seniors, or kids that need to make up credits. So approximately 1.2%, so we have 1618 is what I use for in green. So then I look up the number of students that are taking five classes, the number of students that are taking six classes, and the number of students that are taking seven classes. You multiply, you know, the chart makes, basically, it's the classes times the students, comes out with the number of seats, or seats filled. And then what I try to do is divide, get a class average of 27, because, right, we try to get our core classes, which are majority of our classes, at 25 to one plus or minus two. So I use 27 as a class average. And this will give you, okay, you need 3.3 teachers, full-time teachers, to cover the classes, all the kids that take five classes. You need 25.9 teachers to cover all the kids that take six classes. And you need 48.9 teachers to cover all the kids that take seven classes. So when you add those three up with the 25.2 that were from the chart on the left, it says we should have approximately 103.4 FTE. If you look at our current staffing, we're at 103.6. So only went .2 over what our, our projection should be. And so what I'm showing you now in option A and option B, next year, if we have, if this projected enrollment comes in as-is, with 1642, and historically, it's been about 1 and 1/4% are outplaced, homeschooled or credit recovery, so that would give us roughly 1621. If we go with, our consistent trends, we'd have the 32 students in five classes, six student, 632 in six classes, and 957 in seven classes. So-
Why do we think the number for five classes is gonna drop by thirds, two-thirds for next year?
It's the, it's the historical data. Shows that 60% of our students enrolled take seven classes.
That one I understand, but I'm asking-
So then I, it goes, there's a percentage for each of these. I don't have the chart up in front of me.
Okay.
So if you-
If the percent with the, the five classes, that wouldn't swing that much, right?
Right. I gotta, I'll check it again, but I'm pretty certain. Kristen, you have the Excel there to see what the percentage is. But if you look at what our staffing is-
I mean, the number of students for next year is nearly identical to this year, right?
Right.
So it just seems odd that we think-
Only 32.
Well, it's a two-thirds drop in the number of students that are gonna take five courses. Unless maybe this year was an anomaly where it came up high or something.
Yeah, because I think if you look at the 632, we're only at 583 in the chart above.
All right.
So that's where you, actually, you see more with six. A traditional student is assigned six classes in one study hall.
Right.
Our, 60% of our kids take seven.
Right. Okay, well.
So if we look at this roughly, the only, the increase, the only change is the 25.6. I'm still saying we staff close to 27.1. We're at 27.03 as our current average right now. The only change that I'm showing in an increase in staffing is if you look at social workers, we have 2.0 right now. We need to still make some strides in addressing some of our students that are having issues that are non-special ed students. We do deal with a lot of students that have personal issues, some family issues, where our social workers, between the amount of minutes they need to cover with, being, just the required social work minutes that come out of the IEPs that were mandated to do, and then all of a sudden, a kid will come in that's having a terrible experience at home that day, or something's going on in their personal life, or they're suicidal, or have some other disorder. Our social workers are starting to get spread a little thin. So we had talked about, we're going through some numbers right now, where we're having one of our administrative assistants pull, you know, the same list of schools that we compare ourselves to, how many social workers they have, how many do they dedicate to special ed, how many do they dedicate to regular ed, just to see where we're at. So that's the, if you look at that chart on the left for Required, the only increase I'm, I'm saying, that I'm proposing right now, is that .4 at part-time social worker. I highlight always special ed and ELL, because if we get a huge influx of second language learners, we're mandated to have to provide those courses. That could always increase. And the same with special ed. If our IEPs increase significantly with incoming freshmen or transfers, there may be a need to increase special ed.
Or the action, you don't even have to have a huge increase in IEPs, if the needs are certain, significant, you could have a one-on-one situation or something.
Right. So I, I think we should be fine being able to use the 1.43, 1.42 that we budgeted this year for next year, even with that increase of social workers.
I think it'd be helpful, if we have one more fact. Wes asked you, to give you the history on the overall class of, size of core classes, which you indicated has gone down the last three years.
Correct.
So four years ago, you started a program where you were going to start with the freshman class and reduce the class size for the core classes, right?
Yes.
And we went through now all four years as of this year, right?
So there's no read, there's no need to add teachers. We added two to three teachers each year to try to address those needs.
Okay.
So we're at a point where all our core classes, Kristen, am I correct, are at 27 to one?
Math, English, Science, and some Social Studies.
Right.
So are we also, the seniors that have, was it study hall either first or the last period, are they allowed to, you know, come in late or go home to kind of ease some of the class?
Students who have a seventh-period study hall as seniors are allowed early dismissal.
Okay.
We don't allow, right now, students that, to have a late arrival. That late arrival in the past, we have done, I believe, prior to my arrival, and what was happening was then students were taking it upon themselves to be even later in their late arrival. So when they had a first-period study hall, they would show up sometime during second period.
I had swimmers, they really liked the late arrival, because they could go home and shower and come back, so.
But with respect to this report, neither of those affect the head count for the staff, right? Because-
No, that-
I think the reason-
Study hall that-
The issue would be like the five classes, like where that comes up, if a senior has two study halls, and one happens to be seventh hour, then they would have a study hall in their day, and they still have early dismissal.
I think Laura's asking that question, because prior to my arrival, there was a push with the administration to eliminate late arrival and early release.
No, I, I think that's a good program to have, but I'm also asking, because if you have a significant number of students, especially senior year, who take advantage of early, being able to leave an hour early for jobs or whatever, that could free up some FTEs.
Right, so I was, I wasn't done. When you brought that up, and what I, when we changed it back to allow late arrival, the elimination of that late arrival was forcing kids to either take a study hall. And so most of those kids are like, well, I'm not gonna sit in a study hall, I might as well take a class. And so that drives up your FTE count for classes that they maybe necessarily weren't gonna take. And there was two schools of thought. Kids taking other academic classes is, is better than kids leaving early, right? But then there's also the school of thought of, if a kid needs to leave early to work, or to take care of a family member, pick up a younger sibling, or other things they have going on in their life. And so we did shift that a couple of years ago, and that has helped a little bit.
Okay.
So we still have a large portion of our students that take-
Seven.
Seven classes.
Right.
So what I've tried to do is, is show the board that we can hang at this 27.1 to 27.4, and, and remain pretty flat with our staffing budgeted now at 104.3, 104.2.
Because the number of students-
Because the number of students is flat. Okay? If the board comes back in, in the spring and says they would want to see cuts, you know, then I'd have to try to raise this class size average, and then we'd have to identify where we would be able to try to cut some certified staff, because that's, 80% of your budget is staffing.
Right, and that's why, rather than cut, we want to have the ability for students to self-select, particularly your senior. We have 400 seniors. If every senior sent them leaving an hour early to go to work, that would free up quite a bit of FTEs.
Yes, but what we, we have that, we have that in place already, and I don't, 400 seniors aren't signing up for it.
They aren't doing it.
But let's make sure, I, I'm not sure I understand this. So if somebody has last period, just seniors can leave early, or can anybody leave early?
Seniors.
Okay, so only seniors can leave early, and that frees up, because rather than, they wouldn't have gone to a study hall, they might have taken a course, the majority of them, it sounds like. And in the morning, nobody gets the, if they, first period, nobody gets to come late. They all have to be here for first period, right?
Believe so, yes.
So because of that, some students, rather than have to come in and sit in a, in a study hall first period, they might take a course?
They could, you know. I don't know how much of an impact it has, because it's dependent on where their study hall falls. So, you know, you could have a study hall, but if it's third period, you know, that's not gonna help you one way or another with early release or late arrival.
Okay.
So we could, we could, we could look, if the budget becomes tight, before we say we want to cut teachers or raise class sizes. One thing you could tweak is we could look back at allowing students that have first-period study hall to come with a late arrival, if they're a senior. The other thing would be possibly an early release for juniors and seniors.
Yeah, maybe juniors and seniors, because juniors would be old enough to have jobs.
Cars.
Right.
And cars.
So that's something we could look at. I don't think we rush to that till we see where we're at, after the board said, hey, after the mid-year point, we should be seeing where the budget is and where we're at.
And that's the one thing Mr. Grissom is pretty insistent on, even though he can't be here. He didn't tell me today. Several of the members, including him, were concerned that, when we talk about at the end, what the budget, can we do a balanced budget, that our biggest expenditure, our hands are tied, because we approved the head count long before we approved the budget.
In March.
So he is expecting some kind of preliminary information about how the head count is gonna affect the budget before we approve the head count this year. So, and I'm looking at him, but obviously, I'm talking to you, I'm sorry.
Right.
So is that something that-
Nope, we're on pace. I mean, if you looked at Scott's report already, we're finished, we've, Scott's report financially- I mean, if you looked at Scott's report already, we're finished, we've, Scott's report, financial report for this year is, we're at thirty-three percent of the fiscal year, we're at thirty-nine, we've used thirty-nine percent of the budget. Last year, at this time, we were at thirty-eight percent of the budget.
Right.
So, I mean, we're on pace to what we were saying, we're trending, it's not like we've increased expenditures, anything out of the ordinary. But before this board would say, "Let's raise class sizes and let's cut teachers," there's some things we can probably do, simple things like maybe allowing juniors and seniors, not allowing juniors to have early release. So, those students that are maybe taking an extra elective or course that they normally wouldn't take, before we start cutting teachers and raising class sizes in core classes, that might be a way that, it might help with some of the FTE.
Well, let me ask the board members, I think it'd be helpful to have that information for you to estimate. If we allow juniors to leave early, how would that affect the head count? And if we allowed juniors and seniors to come in after first period, and again, you could say, "I don't like the idea," but you're asking for it.
What if you started sports the last period of the day?
What's that?
All the fall sports.
Say that again.
What if you started the sports in the last period?
They tried that a few years ago, and I don't think it worked very well.
But the other issue is, as, like we said, we have sixty percent that still take seven classes, so what do you do with those kids that have a full schedule?
They might drop down to six, because they're playing...
All right, we don't want to, I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to sacrifice the integrity of the academic institution. We would want to encourage kids to take seven classes that want to take seven classes, right? If those kids want to take two IEPs, we want to make sure we allow that opportunity. All I'm saying to you is, probably, as a former dean, assistant principal, principal, the building administration probably said, "Hey, we're only gonna allow early release, not late arrival, because the school board has an attendance initiative and a tardy initiative, and so, you're gonna get more tardies at the beginning of the day than you are at the end of the day, right? It's not an attendance issue.
Well, but...
And our ADA does generate revenue for the school district. So, when those kids miss two periods, now they count for a quarter of an absence, that hurts your ADA, which the state uses as one of the factors in your state aid.
It's the only factor that you have control over in your funding.
And when a student, and when a student only takes five classes, an absence in one class has a much bigger impact on your overall ADA, because they look at the percent of the day that a student misses, and the number of hours that a student is...
Well, this is all useful information, and I think you should include it, but provide the data, the estimate, because, you know, the other flip side of it is, we put a lot of programs in place to get people here on time and do it. Again, I'm ignorant of this, but there's ways to make kids come on time second period, probably, maybe not, maybe there are, but I still think their competing interest, you know, we want the attendance, we want kids to be well-educated, but there's also competing interest that, if kids are just taking the classes because they have to come in first period, you know, I don't know if that's the best choice.
I think one way to pull this information, Kristen, we should probably pull the historical information of seniors that have taken advantage of the early release, because if you put it out there now, and we do like a survey, you'll get a lot of kids that will sign up and say, "Yeah, I'd be interested in leaving school early." And then, all of a sudden, they realize, well, they gotta give up marching band, because they run seventh period, and span it, they want to be a magical senior and only run six, you know what I mean?
Or first period.
Where they play a sport, and they want to go home and come back.
So, the conflicts, the conflicts might, but at least if we could see a historical trend from when we started, when we implemented this back, and it was under my, so it's within the last five or six years that we implemented back early release. If we can see how that's grown over the last five years, we can come up maybe with a trend of, maybe that will mean, I mean, basically, every class period, you want to, a point-two FTE is roughly thirty students.
Right.
Is the way you should think of it.
Yeah, I mean, if a student is only in one sport, and they leave early, you know, two-thirds of the year, they can still leave and do as they will. It's only the one time during the sport, maybe they'll go home, change, eat, whatever, come back, many of the students, because we're talking about junior and seniors that have cars.
The thing about the impact on parking and traffic as well, how many of those juniors and seniors carpool? Because when you carpool, you're more likely to get a permit. Juniors and seniors that have younger siblings who drive their younger siblings to school, and now, parents who are gonna have to get into the traffic to...
Those are all factors to consider.
I'm just saying, but it is something that's better.
Factors to consider, before we cut programs, I think we can look at options for people to self-select.
I think this is all, listen, this is all the right questions to be asked.
Right.
Because if we can tweak one or two things without cutting teachers or raising class sizes, or do anything, or cut class offerings, you know, that was another thing to do. You know, when it got, when it got really bad with the deficit, one of the things I was proposing to the board is, "Hey, you got sixty percent of your kids taking seven classes." You know, that, at some point in time, if we didn't fix our budget, that was something we were gonna have to look at, like, do we allow everybody to take seven classes, or do we limit that to juniors and seniors, or... So, before, I think, this is all good information for the board to be asking, and these are all things we should want to look at, because if there's one or two things we can do to stay afloat and stay close to a balanced budget, and until we start having some of our retirees and some of our shifts in our salary schedule, shift more to new teachers, more senior teacher, that will, I think that will be a good way to keep the integrity of what we're trying to do here for academics and for the students here. So, we can definitely look at that, Kristen, we'll pull that with Beth, and see if there's, if that's worth looking into more. But the long story, the moral of the story, my story here tonight is, I think, even doing exactly what we're doing, we should be able to stay rather flat in staffing, because our projections for enrollment are staying rather flat. And so, we should be right around one-oh-four, one-hundred-and-four teachers next year.
But the thing is, the...
But we still have a negative budget.
Well, I got another thing that's gonna address that, I think, in the levy presentation that I went through with the finance council, and I'll touch on that in a minute.
But, and the other thing is, why it's worthwhile looking at is, you know, next, the next year, you project that enrollment's gonna go from six forty-two to six eighty-three, that's gonna be a teacher or two, and the next year, you're projecting it's gonna go to seventeen oh-three, that's another teacher or two.
Right.
So, at time, as the, as money gets tight under that, if you're trying to balance the budget, we're going, for next year, it's gonna be easier, because our enrollment's expected to be flat. But the following two years, we're gonna have to deal with less revenue at a time when our enrollment's going up pretty, you know, for our kind of standard, kind of significantly two years in a row. So, it's better to look at it now, and, you know, again, we listen to everything you tell us, Kristen, I mean, we know there's downsides to that, or you wouldn't do it the way you do. We know you consider all those things, but at the end of the day, the board's gotta look at the whole picture, so I think it just would help educate us.
Absolutely, you know, certainly am cognizant of that. It's also important to keep in mind, too, those years where enrollment goes up, we do have a few teachers that are planning on retiring.
Right.
Which hopefully should help offset some costs as well.
Sure.
I have a question. So, what does a study hall save in terms of FTEs compared to a regular teacher?
Our study hall is supervised, I mean, there's no cap on our study hall, it's in a cafeteria.
It's in the cafeteria.
And it's supervised by a non-certified FTE, someone that's on an hourly rate of pay, compared to a teacher that's on a certified rate of pay, and that there's a cap in their classroom.
So, study hall is very economical, but as they pointed out, kids don't like study hall that much, so if they have to be in the building, they'd rather take a class than go do their homework in the cafeteria.
Right.
What they're telling us is the norm.
Correct, that was the intention of reinstating the early release, because at the time, the previous administration had a concept that, if you didn't have late arrival, early release, those kids had to choose between a study hall and an academic course, and most of our students would choose an academic course, which is a great philosophy.
Yeah.
When we were running a two-million-dollar deficit, we had to come up with some creative ways, that if there's, there were kids, even if it's ten, twenty, or thirty, that wanted to leave early, we should allow them to leave early, instead of taking up a seat in the classroom where...
That's why I go back to the varsity sports, right?
Right.
If we just do a junior, senior, you take diversity, maybe that, maybe, I don't know, that's what I did, especially, I played, I had a sport that was off-campus, I think we still, baseball's off-campus, you know, it's a process to get there, dah 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 dah, Y, X, Y, Z, so, maybe that is an option.
And some of our athletes do do that, I mean, they take up, they'll have a PE waiver, and if it's at the end of the day, I don't know if we allow them to sign out of their study hall, those are all things we can look into. But I don't think you can make a universal, start varsity sports at seventh period, because there are a lot of our varsity athletes, you notice today, we recognize so many kids that are academic all-conference, because a lot of our athletes are the students that are taking two or three AP courses.
Yeah, the issue with that, too, would be our coaches, a lot of our coaches are in-house, and so, all of those teachers would have to have seventh period off, which would make scheduling classes very challenging, especially because certain departments are very coach-heavy, and so, then, it would almost be impossible for certain departments, like the math department.
PE last period of the day.
Correct.
I hear the concern, just, I think you know, the new board members have gotten to know me now, the board members that are returning, board members know, I hear the two concerns. The two biggest concerns that this board wants me to work on is, make sure that budget deficit doesn't increase, and find out what we can be doing differently to improve our college readiness in our work with our feeder schools. And that's what we've been working on on a regular basis. Our teachers' unions is aware of that. They've come to, the executive board of the union has come to me with suggestions, and maybe some things we can do in-house with interventions to try to improve college readiness that won't increase staffing or cost. So, everybody's, the message is loud and clear, and we all are pulling in the same direction, so, and I think a sign of me saying to you, "Hey, for next year, we're flat, every year, we can remain flat or keep our staffing consistent without increasing," there's some dollars to be saved there, so I'm well aware of the concern, and we're on top of it.
Great, thank you, thank you, Kristen.
Some information on that, kind of these dad-like, perhaps the board would, too, is this percentage of students that are taking five, six, seven classes, how's that compares to other comparable schools?
They gathered that information when we looked at it to consider cutting it down to six, but maybe you can update.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if some of this is, I don't know if this is always available on a school website where they would share this, of how many kids are taking five, or how many kids take six.
I don't believe so. It would be something you'd have to ask them if they already have it calculated.
What, does five a year for four years get you graduated in time?
That's the bare minimum you could take.
Twenty-one, isn't it twenty-one?
It's twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Okay.
So, that would not, that would be twenty.
Oh, okay, so, five a year for four years would not get you graduated. Gotcha. You'd have to take six, at least two of the years.
Right.
Yeah, so...
And many of our students, obviously, you could tell by the data, have...
Absolutely. Both of my children are in the sevens, every year of their career here, I think.
I don't think we're at the point where we need to look at that yet, as far as limiting class, like classes you could take.
Right.
That's, that's when we're talking, that budget deficit's got to, I mean, we may need to be there in a few years from now, but at that point, where I don't think we're even close to that point yet. I think we have to let some things work itself out, I mean, the purpose that we negotiated, the contract, the way we negotiated, is that we have almost ten teachers within the next five years that are retiring, so we'll be able to replace them with new teachers at a different point in the salary, salaries allotment. At that time, if you look at our attendance projections going out three or four years, they start to work their way back towards where we're at right now, right? So, is, there's a, there's a valley here that we need to fight our way through, but it's, it's not an abyss. That's what I would say right now.
I mean, the only thing I'd caution here is, I think it's reasonable to have the Plan B or Plan C, and to identify the low-hanging fruit, whatever that's gonna be, the next low-hanging fruit, which would be maybe juniors...
Yes. And that's what I say, I think they're good questions, John. I think that's a good question, because if it's, if allowing juniors and seniors to, or allowing juniors to leave, or possibly doing the late arrival, helps us get through another year without increasing that deficit, or actually helping lower the deficit, without really impacting course offerings or class sizes, I think that's a win for the board, right?
And the fact of the matter is, it'd be helpful to know, it might not affect the head count of teachers at all. If thirty kids leave early, and they were gonna take twenty different courses, it doesn't even affect what's available.
Very well, you're absolutely right.
So, that's why it's just helpful to know, whether it's something to consider.
Are we ready to go on?
Anybody have any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, we're ready to go on.
Thanks, Kristen. So, the next item on the agenda, then, is FOIA requests.
Two FOIA requests, the responses are attached. We're looking at the one for, the second one with Mr. Fox. I may have pulled that information on a, for a previous report, or have access to that, so I'm gonna check. We don't have an actual report for that, but I might be able to pull that out of just some general information, so I'm working on that with the legal counsel, and the other one, the response is attached.
Any questions? Police radio?
No update at this time.
It's time for visitor statements, and since there are no visitors anymore, we will not read that long warning there. So, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is additional discussion items. Does anybody on my right have additional discussion items they'd like? Anybody on my left have any additional discussion items? John?
Do we need to formally put that on now?
Yeah, we can discuss it at the end of the meeting.
Discussion of the letter went out to parents concerning the tolerance week.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which would be approval of the minutes for the public hearing regular on October ten, the regular meeting in closed session October ten, committee of the whole and special meeting October twenty-four, committee of the whole and special meeting closed session October twenty-four. Is there somebody who would be, like to read the motion? What page is that on, Jane?
It's on ninety-eight.
Resolved that the Board of Education, Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby take the following actions on the listed consent agenda items. Approve minutes from the meetings held on October tenth and October twenty-fourth, 2017, open and closed as presented and amended in the November fourteenth, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, anybody?
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Towne, and second by Ms. Ruska, thank you. Is there any discussion? Take the vote, please.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Dr. Trenin?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Yes. That brings us to old business life safety items, capital improvements.
No update, we touched on the punch list, and I touched on my plan for the new facility stuff.
Okay, so that brings us to new business, payment of bills.
Scott, you had some bills questions that were submitted, one, some from Mr. Smithing, and some from Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Page number, please.
Okay, if we could start off on Board Book, page one-seventeen. The first one is American Red Cross Store, lifeguard manuals, CPR masks. These are training manuals for wellness classes that cover curriculum work. Student fees that are collected offset the cost. Next question is on Board Book, page one-eighteen, under Sports Supply Group, for PE leader shirts for sixteen-hundred dollars. The wellness department budget covers the cost of this. There were eighty leadership shirts that were purchased at nineteen dollars per shirt, plus freight on that, and then also, as part of this order, was the PE tank tops for two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. There was thirty-four tank tops purchased at seven-fifty. Student fees are actually being collected to offset the cost for those PE tank tops.
The wellness shirts, that's an honors course, right?
Yeah.
PE, and that, then those students that take that class, don't they help teach or something, other classes, right?
They help supervise.
Staying on that Board Book, page one-eighteen, you have... Staying on that Board Book page one eighteen, you have DEMPco Enterprises, Epilog Zinc twenty-four laser filtration equipment for fifteen thousand three hundred, this is a laser cutting equipment device for etching and engraving various types of materials in our CTE classes, our current technical education courses, this is an approved purchase through the Perkins Grant.
So it's covered fully by grant money?
By grant money, yes. Board Book page one eighteen, Deveraux, Texas Treatment Tuition, this is out-of-district tuition as per the IEP placement for a special education student. The next question was submitted on Board Book page one twenty-one for Fransit Radlett, this is our legal services for twenty-eight forty-one fifty, this is professional fees and expenses for our district law firm for legal counsel in regards to general school law and special education matters. Next question was on Board Book one twenty-two, under Ice Town Ice Machine for three thousand one twenty-eight, this was the replacement cost for the ice machine in the trainer's office, this was the lowest price out of the three quotes that we received for the ice machines.
And then, you know what, just an extra note, how good Joel and his staff are, we only replaced the top of it, we were able to salvage the tub, and so we only replaced the cooling unit at the top, so we saw, cut it off and were able to remount it, so we only bought the top of this newest.
And we did that for both ice machines that we had to get, we did have to get one for in the cafeteria kitchen area. Board Book page one twenty-three, My Life Home Healthcare Skilled Nursing Service for four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, this is costs associated for nursing services determined by IEPs for special education students. Board Book page one twenty-seven, Village of Riverside Paving Project, sixteen thousand four fifty, this was for additional handicap spots and striping outside on Ridgewood, and also a new ADA accessible curb cut for handicap parking spots, along with the ADA crosswalk curb that we have outside by the stadium, along with all the striping that was done, these were mandatory guidelines that we had to have in place per the lawsuit that we had for the parking lot.
So when we did our Village, when we did the traffic committee with officials from Riverside and Brookfield, and we were talking about traffic control and some of the other things they had to do with striping and stuff, to help with traffic flow, we, our special ed buses that pick up up front that we used, we tried doing on the side of the building, we tried to do in the front of the building, so we're doing it now back on Ridgewood, and so we had painted off with the special striping that's blasted to the street, so it stays, we had designated bus lanes put in, but the way those came in, in order to fit the number of buses we had, they would have blocked our handicap access from the side of the street to the sidewalk, so we moved the handicap sign, I had, the Village Rivers, I had contractors that were doing this throughout the town, so it was just a pass-through village, or pass-through payment that the Village had their contractor do and gave us quotes for. So I put a new, we moved the handicap access down so we could park our buses in front, we needed to do our special ed pickup and drop-offs, and we had a special ed curb cut put in in the sidewalk with the raised things for the, that are required, and then we also had one put in right across here, now when you cross the actual crosswalk that's been thermo blasted there, there's an actual handicap accessible sidewalk square that's been put in that attaches into the sidewalk, and then I had them do all the striping, so between all that, these are funds that I paid out of Fund Sixty, which are capital improvement stuff, but that put us in compliance with all the stuff that was in the lawsuit.
Moving on to the checklist thing, on Board Book page one thirty-five, Blair Jensen, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, reimbursement for supplies for photo class, this order was placed by the staff member for special items and special pricings specifically for items that are used within his particular class, this is not the norm on the practice, normally it's placed through the business office, through accounts payable, with everything in it, in this particular case, these were items that were specifically needed to meet the specific details of what his equipment is within his class and what the particular supplies were, so it is not the norm to have the staff member just go and charge it and then get reimbursed.
So, has he been told what the norm is, I'm gonna follow.
He will be told.
District procedure in the future?
Yes.
Great.
And the last question is on Board Book page one thirty-nine, under United States Treasury, nine forty-one correction of twenty-four oh three eighty-one, in July, there were two payrolls processed for curriculum hours used with the leftover tuition reimbursement money that was out there remaining, as per the collective bargaining agreement, that remaining dollars that were there were to be used before the end of the fiscal year on that, what happened on this one is, between the two payrolls that were processed, it put us over the threshold where it had to be wired directly from the treasurer's office to the state, unfortunately, the treasurer's office was closed around the July fourth holiday, so instead of getting routed on the third, which it should have been, it didn't get routed until after the holiday, we incurred late fees on this, the state allows no exception or takes any, you know, type of, you know, deduct.
You called, correct, I had you call.
You know, this is just what their policy is, in order to correct this issue, the late fee has to be paid for that, moving forward, it will be addressed, moving forward for this particular year, moving on, the payrolls will be processed much earlier before the end of the fiscal year, so that if anything has to be routed to the state, we have time and it doesn't go around a holiday with it, so there's no more penalties that will be incurred by the district.
And it's, this was the first year that we, the implementation of the collective bargaining agreement part that allowed the staff in the building to use unused tuition reimbursement money, but we don't know how much on tuition reimbursement money is left until March, so we really had like a short three and a half month window to try to get everything scheduled and get all those activities in and paid for, because after June thirtieth, the way the contract states is, then that money goes back to the district, and so we had, we wanted to make sure we were offering teachers an opportunity to do professional development, was what they were requesting more of, and so it put us right up against the Fourth of July window, so that's why we had to do two payroll cycles. Any other ones, Scott?
Those were all the questions submitted on the board bills and the checklist.
Okay.
So, are there any other questions from anybody?
So, back to that Texas, is that school in Texas?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no school in Chicago, how does that, how does that negotiation work?
Well, they have to sit down, it's the way they explain how the IEPAs work, they sit down with the parents and the professionals and discuss options that are available and, you know, dependent upon the needs of the child in this instance, because it's about, he's like a junior.
We, we, we need to be cautious so that the students.
Right.
So, more or less, when an IEP is determined that they have the specific placement based on a student's disability, so we do have, we used to have a student in New York, we used to have a student in Minnesota, I mean it's common that if a student has a specific disability and between the IEP team and the school district, it's determined that that's, I mean, yes, we are fiscally responsible when we go to these IEP meetings, it's not just an open checkbook.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious how it works, I don't, I don't understand this.
No, the idea is to try to find things.
We live in the third largest city in the United States that we can provide for them here, I'm confused by that.
Yeah, no, it's, there are some specific cases, and we do have students that we do have residentially placed that live there, out of state, and there's requirements that come with that under the federal government and IDEA laws, so we do try to, that's why you see a lot of those, even the cab bills, that sometimes you questioned about with Blue Cab and some of that, because we'll have students that are, you know, can only, are only succeeding at a specific therapeutic day school that's an hour away and we have to pay for the cab and we don't have a bus, I mean, there's this, that's a special ed, that's the.
Cabs are cheaper buses, I guess.
Yeah, so that's the requirement still, but, I answer your question, it does.
Tim, I'm. Any other questions? Did we make the motion on this one? No, right.
We need a motion to approve.
Marion, we didn't do a motion yet, did we? It's on page one fifty.
She has it up as well.
Somebody want to read that motion?
What, what page?
It's up, it's up on the overhead.
Resolve that Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the November fourteenth, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smithing and second by Dr. Keen, thank you.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to the proposed two oh seventeen tax levy first read.
So what you have in front of you tonight is your first read of a levy, and I know Tim had sent in some comments, but we needed to check the numbers he sent in.
Which were wrong.
So, the first box that you see on the left is the 2016 tax year levy, which is payable, was payable this school year, the board levied last year, and then that first column is what the board levied, which was the four point nine five percent of the previous year's levy, the county automatically will provide what this loss definition, which is actually they give you an extra three percent of what you're levying, on top of what you're levying for any property taxes that are uncollected by the county.
It's three percent on the operating funds and five on the debt.
Correct. So, you have extension without loss, that's the X, so the board levied sixteen point six seven six, we actually got sixteen oh four five, but then when you, the county provided its loss factor, we actually received a total of sixteen five two seven two eighty. And so, the reason the boxes that are shaded in gray for the 2017 year for the proposed levy is basically what we're saying to the board is we should levy four point nine five percent, okay? In truth in taxation law in Illinois, says anything over five percent, you have to hold a public hearing, we've always held a public hearing here under my tenure, just to be transparent to the community and allow people to come and hear the levy and ask questions, but technically we're not required to unless it's over five percent, the reason we do the four point nine five percent, if there's some new properties or something that we miss, it provides us that overarching to make sure we account for all dollars that we're warranted to receive. What the board would really should be prepared for is, you normally only get from the county is CPI, whatever CPI is for the previous year, and then that three percent loss factor, so even though the board is gonna be levying a sixteen point eight in that first column, column H, we're probably gonna get up closer to, we'll probably get closer to about sixteen three eighty-two, between sixteen three eighty-two and sixteen point eight, okay, once they add the loss factor, all right? And so what, basically what happens on the tax report, if you ever pulled this document, you'll see, it'll have the board's levy amount, which will be the sixteen eight forty, then it will show you a three percent loss factor, a separate dollar amount, for maximum allowable levy of seventeen point three four five, really at the end of the day, it's, it's whatever CPI is, plus a three percent loss factor, so we should get about sixteen point eight next year, which is roughly about three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase from this year. And that, and I show that in the next box.
Deficit.
If we stay flat.
And that the, the debt, though, they do it based on actual, right? They do put the loss factor, but the, they don't look at CPI, it's based on actual.
Based on actual, so they'll look at all what your outstanding bonds are.
Yeah.
Put the total on there with payment and interest on it, and it will be what the total is.
And so when we do the final presentation, we'll know, we already know what it is going to be for next year, right?
Yeah, I gotta just double check with, with all the refinancing on it to make sure, okay, exactly how many bonds are outstanding, what is gonna be our principal and interest, I'll have a better handle on what the exact payment will be.
So, we just wanted to prepare the boards for that, what you're seeing, what you're levying in the gray box and with the loss factor, you're most likely gonna see the two columns to the left of it with the CPI, the tax gap, and so for us, that's about, like I said, a three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase in the ed fund, a total of about four hundred and twelve thousand in our operating funds. Anybody have any questions on that? Now, Wes, you brought up a point earlier about, hey, we still have a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit, I talked about this with the finance council a little bit, and this is something Tim and I have been going, Mr. Walsh and I have been going back and forth on a little bit, and he has a good point, the only thing the school district does on an accrual basis is its audit every year, and so this year, before this board approved basically a cash-based budget in September, we had received almost six hundred thousand dollars in property tax payments that came after July one, so our auditor accrued those, but technically we all know that they're gonna be, they're gonna come up this year when we get to the end of the year as cash on hand, and so if you think about that, when we approved that budget in September, those tax, those payments received, since our budget's pretty much a cash-based budget, that's how the treasurer's office operates, we really almost have a three hundred thousand dollar surplus instead of the three hundred thousand dollar deficit.
Six hundred thousand should have been, it's in this.
Yeah, because we received receipts this year.
Because I get it, in this fiscal year.
In this fiscal year.
Although the auditor kicks it back and accrues it to the previous fiscal year, when we get to the end of the budget cycle, it's gonna be sitting there as cash on hand.
So what I was, what I suggested they consider, it's gonna take them looking into this, is rather than doing the budget, when you approve the final budget, based on the, what we just did with the levy here, because they'll know that, the budget should also include the carryover receipts that you got from last year's that are, came in this year already, we, they're pretty much done collecting the second assessment by the time we approve our final budget, but we, in the past, we haven't made an adjustment to that budget number for the cash we already received, but the other thing Scott's gonna have to take a look at, that happens every year, so some of the levy that we are going to expect or putting in, if we just put the levy in for the budget for that year, some of the receipts are gonna come in after the fiscal year also, and the difficult part about it is the county doesn't always collect the money at the same, they don't send the bills out at the same time every year.
Right.
So, it's a little bit of an art as opposed to a science, but I think we could be more accurate if we took a little closer look at that.
And where we're going back and forth on this a little bit is that, this isn't the first time this happened, there's a historical trend.
Right.
So even though we're budgeting, I mean, it kinda offsets in the long haul, because you're budgeting that you're gonna receive ninety-eight or ninety percent of those, ninety-nine percent of those tax dollars, even if you only get ninety-four, you weren't counting on the three or four percent you got after.
From last time, because your budget is ninety-four percent carrying that forward.
It almost brings you close to the ninety-eight or so that you were budgeting anyways, so I don't know if it will offset it much, but that's something we can look at and do it, but it's still gonna keep us, we'll still be close, we gotta keep that deficit, an eye on the deficit.
Right.
Does everybody understand the levy part? So one of the things that's required by the Board of Education is in December, we'll have a hearing, even though we're not required, because we're under the five percent of the truth in taxation law, we'll still have a hearing so that the community can come and listen to why the board is levying what it's levying, and if anybody has any questions, they can ask them at that time at the hearing, the board will need to approve the levy in December, and Scott needs to take it down to actually the county building and submit it, so that it's in time, because it has to be due before the end of December.
The third, do, there's handling.
Right. Okay.
That make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So there's nothing to vote on on that, we're gonna vote next meeting, so that moves us to the proposed resolution for IASB delegate assembly, Laura, would you like to, we talked about it last time, do you want to say anything else this time?
Well, if anybody looked over and had anything that they were.
I put my comments in the board pack, if you mind, I agreed with the.
With their recommendations?
Recommendation, Jen.
Okay, yeah.
Just wanted to talk about, we had an agreement with they, they want to raise the sales tax, right, one percent, is that, wanna, you wanna read that?
That was a proposal, but the IASB board does not think it's something that should be adopted. They have a pretty good explanation of it.
All right.
Okay.
So the only, but one other one, though, they had in there, had to do with the levy, and that had to do with if you don't do what we do, where you levy to make sure you capture all the funds, but then something goes south, like the state shifts some money onto the board budget the next year, to have the right to levy money you didn't levy a prior year, go back up to three years, if something like that happens.
Right, try to recapture what you didn't get.
That's, that's one of the proposals, which of course, just IASB making a proposal, trying to get the legislature to agree.
And Laura, you're attending that meeting?
I am.
It's on Saturday, I believe, Saturday morning?
Yes.
Okay.
So if anybody hasn't had a chance to respond to her, please.
Yeah, if anybody thinks of something that came to your mind, just let me know, I'll be there.
Not a question, maybe I didn't read it right, but I would.
Okay. I'll be there Friday, so if anybody else is there Friday, I'll be there for the afternoon workshop, plenary.
I think Wes, Ramona, and Gina have their training on Friday, so they'll be there.
Yep, they'll be there Friday.
Be there Friday, but we'll be in a special.
Yeah.
Your training will finish in time for the plenary.
Yeah, it's at 3:00, and then the keynote speaker starts at 3:00.
Yeah. Oh, I haven't looked at, one day at a time, man, I haven't looked at it, not Friday or Friday yet.
Anything else on that? So you're okay with Laura? You good with this one?
Yeah.
That moves us on to the matters for closed session. They are personnel, ratifying superintendent's contract, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Did we wanna, I thought we were gonna discuss John's issue at the end of the meeting, are we gonna do it now or at the end? Kevin, what's your plan?
What is it, what is the, whatever the board prefers.
Would you rather talk about it now?
Sure.
Okay.
Just do it now.
All right, John.
John had, John had submitted some questions over the weekend about tolerance week. Tolerance week is occurring this week in the high school. This school has a student, a club, one of our student clubs is the Association of Students for Tolerance, and so, over the last couple of years, I think the last four for sure that I know, we've ran the tolerance week. And so, the group of students meet with the administration and plan out a week of where they show tolerance for different topics that are big in society, and so, Kristen can provide a little more detail of what the week is. I sent the flyer to the board, most of our parents, you probably got that email, it's got via Skyward as well.
Yeah, so during this week and prior to the week, the AST, the Association of Students for Tolerance, president reaches out to various extracurricular groups throughout RB to see which groups would be interested. And so, as you can see, throughout the, throughout the week, we have a variety of other groups that also participate, because they feel it's very important to not only celebrate our differences, but to encourage all students to accept one another regardless of the race, sexual orientation, religion, et cetera. And so, we had Gender Equality Day, today was LGBTQ Pride Day, tomorrow is, I'm trying to find these.
Environmental Awareness.
Environmental Awareness. Thursday is the actual International Day of Tolerance, and so, students will be wearing either blue and white, or specific gays t-shirts, and then Friday is Minority Empowerment Day, and that is our African American club as well. And so we have dress days, we've had quotes being read over the announcements, and various other activities as well.
And so, students specifically leave these present, you know, what they wanna do for that, they bring those recommendations to the administration to review them, to make sure we're not embarking on any controversial topics, or that we're not pushing, we're staying neutral, and not pushing one way or the other, forcing students to make decisions correct.
Correct. And we've also heard, not only from AST, but from a variety of students who participated either in the sit-in last year, or we have a student leadership group, so we have Mr. Mannan meets with students from each club once a month, and gathers their feedback, as well as the Student Advisory Board that meets with myself and both Assistant Principals once a month. So we've heard from all of those students that they not only believe that this week is very important, but they believe we should do other events and activities that support differences throughout the building, as well as, you know, positive events that bring students of different backgrounds together.
So, can you tell me the clubs that's sponsored each day, because it's now listed here?
Yes, so Monday was AST with Gender Equality.
And they don't know what AST is, so that's the.
Is the Association of Students at Tolerance, the students that plan the entire week. Tuesday is GSA Group, so the students that are directly associated with LGBTQ.
What's GSA, though?
That's our club.
Gaia Street Alliance.
Okay.
Tomorrow is our Ecology Club. Thursday is AST again, and Friday is our African American Club.
So, you know, I'll just check, to support John, when I read the letter, and we saw there was a week of tolerance, we couldn't agree more. Our students come from all over the world, they bring in different cultures, religions, and beliefs, and that seemed fine. When I opened up the poster, to see that the weeks, the days had very specific things associated with them, that felt very political, and it no longer felt everyone as acceptance. Particularly on Friday, we had the one with the Black Lives Matter, and we had, we've already had some tension over that, because all lives matter, all our kids, from all different race, religion, around the world, whether you're Hispanic, Asian, all these lives matter. And I'm just talking with John, or, as school board members, we don't come from a political party, we don't say that we're a part of a party, we're neutral. And I just feel that when schools start to have activities that are very political, and pick certain ones out of the gambit of all the ones that could be picked, I, I felt like, just didn't have a place here. You know, it didn't, didn't sing to my soul.
Well, I will commend the administration for working with the children, because this is student-driven, students wanted this, I think it's amazing. I think that hate comes from fear, and fear comes from ignorance, and ignorance is what we do not want to breed, and so having these kids get to know that they should celebrate each other's differences, and that they should realize that they are way more alike than different, they're all trying to find their place in the world at the age that they are, some of them are about to be enfranchised, there's, they're almost, my son is almost 18 years old, he's gonna be able to vote, he's gonna be able to die for this country. They should be able to do things like this in a place where they feel safe to do it. We know that students that attend diverse communities have increased empathy, and reduced their bias, and become better citizens of the world, better democratic citizens, so I think that it's amazing. And I hate the wor-
That is, that is.
Absolutely. No, that is not, that's, that, today, at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, they had a whole thing about it. I was following it on Twitter, they were all talking about diversity and equity, and, no, I'm still talking.
I said, hold on, Wes, let's.
Thank you.
And I said, yes.
I, I, you know, with all the things that are going on in the world, we have a president, and I, again, it's not political, but he is not the, not the role model that I want for my children, or my students that I teach, bullying every day on Twitter, that's ridiculous. And so here, they should be, they should be exempt from that, and I also don't believe in the word tolerant, I prefer the word acceptance, it's a way better word. I tolerate bad behavior, I don't like it, but I tolerate, but I accept other human beings. And so the word should not be tolerance week, it should actually be acceptance week, and that's what we want for our kids.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna butt in here.
Hold on, John.
Well, I'm sorry, let me just, I wanna say something, I'm not, I'm not butting in.
Let her finish.
No, I'm not butting in, I'm sorry. I just.
You are, but I'm done, so you can go.
Now, hold on to, John.
Wes.
I'll defer to John.
Okay, go on, John.
Now, are you finished?
I am.
Okay. I, I think it's important to know that we are not a political body. But as Laura pointed out, this, this has political overtones. Now, I think, you know, we have a policy as a board about controversial issues, and I think as a board, we have to make sure that we're following that policy. I think most people would agree that this stuff, some of these agenda items are controversial. So I think it's reasonable to ask, are we following the policy in the way this is done? Everyone's got different opinions here about our president, not everyone thinks President Trump is a bad person, or is, he's my president, he's all of our presidents, Obama was our president. Any child coming to this school should be comfortable with how he feels about the president, or not be unduly influenced by what he'd consider, say, an administrative or board position. So I think it's clear that, I think it should be clear, we're following our policy, if we have to make our policy a little more clear, maybe we need to look into that. I guess my point is, I wanna make sure that, you know, the way this was, this tolerance week was derived, that all student groups had a chance to participate. Or, I mean, that's important to know, because it just can't be the AST group, you know, looking at their, you know, their friends in this club, let's do this. You know, I wanna make sure Mr. Mannan, whoever's responsible for this, is gonna canvas all the clubs. Because as long as this is student-driven, and it's not driven by someone who's a part of these clubs, or someone who has an agenda, or is pushing an ideology, I think we have to accept it. You'd also have to accept the other side, if we had a Christian or Bible club.
Which we do.
Which we do, if we're gonna have a week of that, then we're, the administration would support that. And maybe the way to do this is, to get those, if we have this type of week, let's have a day for all the clubs, because the way this is presented now, it's left-wing. Okay? That's what this is. It's, and you can interpret it as ideological, and I don't want the community to think that's RB.
That's just my opinion.
It can be interpreted that way, and I think the community needs to know, we are not ideological, we're not pushing an agenda, this is student-driven, we're not trying to be politically correct, we're here for education, and we're here to educate students primarily, we're not gonna stifle anyone's agendas as long as it's student-driven. And I think we just have to make that clear to our community, because this, everyone in this community has to trust this high school, we're not pushing any ideology.
Can I ask, were there any groups who wanted to participate that, that didn't get a day?
No. And some, and some groups choose not to participate, because they have other events later on in the school year, or it's just not a good time for them, because they have other things going on.
Let me ask the question.
Best buddies will often do, spread the word to end the word, in regards to using the word retard or other derogatory comments that often can be made, and so they have their own separate day, and so.
Bulldogs for Life.
Bulldogs for Life will bring in their own guest speaker, they did on October 25th. So, every group has a different, different activities, and so some will choose to participate in this, and others already feel like they're doing other activities throughout the school year, and don't want.
Let me make sure you answered the question based on both of their positions. You asked every group if they wanted to participate in this week, and some said no, and some said yes. That's how you answered the question.
I, I know Dave has last year, I don't know if, if an email went out this year, but I, I do know he asked last year.
Okay, well.
So I would assume the practice would stay the same, so that would be an assumption.
Okay. Thank you.
Wes, do you have something?
No, I wanted to kind of, you know, I, that was my point, I didn't mean to butt in, but the tolerance is, is a really bad word, because I think we needed to more than tolerate, you know, in environmental awareness, you know, but I also think that, you know, we have, you know, I think there are, I think we do other things at the school for, you know, during the week, we have Pride Week, I believe, and we have environment, maybe in October, we do a big environmental Earth Day thing, right? So these, you know, they're not without, they're out, it's all, also. I think, you know, I, I was a little concerned about some of the Spirit Week issues that maybe happens, if people are trying to, you know, interject their ideology into Spirit Week, and that was, that didn't seem to fit fair, right? I don't think that would go over well. This week, if Spirit Week did it reverse, right, that might, that might have a negative, a much negative context, but since it's among the students, and my last point was, I think we've covered it, was did all of the stu-, you know, did all of the groups that, did the Christian Bible group get asked, and they just neglected to, to have a day, and what if there was six days? What, you know, I mean, AST probably covered two days, maybe, maybe there was only three people that wanted, and they had to make up two days, I don't, I don't know that answer, but, you know, I think they're just plans we have to think about.
I mean, I agree, I like the word acceptance, but the International Day of Tolerance is actually from the United Nations.
Right.
That's where, that's where it's derived, the week it's named.
It reads more to me very cultural, like, different cultures, you know, you know, goes back to religion, or your culture, Native America, or Middle East, or wherever your culture.
And our Olas group, which is our organization for Latin American students, has already done a lot this school year to celebrate their, I believe, National Hispanic Month, and they had music going, and announcements going, and a variety of other activities prior to this week, so that could also be a reason why perhaps they chose not to participate again in this week.
I just wanna know that if a student is conservative, that they feel comfortable also expressing their views, and don't feel intimidated, or if a student has other views, that they feel comfortable.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I understand that we're situated in a different political climate than when this week first originated, but it's not, this week isn't about being a Republican or Democrat, or voting for Trump, or voting for Clinton, this week is simply, and if you talk to the kids, they will tell you, it's simply about making sure that all the students, when they enter this building, that they feel welcomed and supported regardless of their background or their beliefs. So, you know, I, I apologize if it came across any other way, you know, the letter was in an effort to actually increase communication, you know, obviously it seemed to raise some more concerns, but we haven't had a letter in the past, and, you know, it was our idea to create a letter to make sure that parents understood the purpose and intent of what was going on, so we can certainly clarify that moving forward in future years as well.
And we, we, again, I think when Dr. Keane first contacted me about this, he just wanted to make sure that it wasn't being pushed by an outside group, and that it was student-centered, and that the school district, in accordance with its policy, remain neutral. And I think we do, I mean, there could be people that say, hey, Bulldogs for Life is a right-wing, it's pro-life. So I mean, we have groups that could be considered either side of the aisle, we do offer, yeah, and we do offer students, and the administration is well aware of that we need to remain, remain neutral, and that all opinions are respected, all students are accepted. And I think one of the purposes, if you sit back from, from this table, and you think about last year, with all the issues we went through towards the end of the year, there were a lot of parents that didn't know all the things we were doing, like tolerance week, and all the clubs that we do have, and then even some of those kids that came and spoke at board meetings, said, well, we could still be doing more. So this is, this is a step in the right direction, and it's a step to communicate, maybe it's an opportunity tonight on TV to clarify our intentions, to make sure that we're respecting all opinions, and we're not pushing any ideologies. And I appreciate everybody's passion at the table, so I think.
Let me make sure, does, does anybody have any more questions or comments on my right? Nope. On your left? I, I'd like to say something, because John called me about it, because Gary was out of town, he couldn't get ahold of me, so I did talk to him, and I talked to Kevin over the weekend, and one of the things I focused on is what the board's supposed to focus on, what's our policy? And we have a policy for controversial matters, and I think just hearing what we heard. And we have a policy for controversial matters, and I think just hearing what we heard here, we could consider some of this, for whatever reason, a bit controversial, and the discretion is of the superintendent and the principal to make sure that we aren't pushing an ideology, and that people have rights on both sides. And I think part of the concern was, and things we can't necessarily discuss on public, is that we've had situations where staff members have taken a strong position with an ideology, and some people were offended by it. So, that is, as a board, we have to make sure that's not continuing. I mean, I certainly hope, and kept John agreeing with this, that everybody on the board wants to have an accepting, tolerant school and student body. You know, every time it comes up, we think, we find, and we try to have that kind of atmosphere here. So, the fact that it's student-run organizations that are pushed, you know, that it's their kind of agenda, and that the fact, and the reason that's important to some people is, then, there's a belief that the students can take their own position, if the board and the administration is running the ideology, then there's a concern if it's one way or the other, the students on the other side of the aisle or agenda issue might feel uncomfortable taking what they feel their position is, which may or may not be the same, right? So, I, I just want to make sure that people understand, that's why the issue, I believe, was raised, and I think everybody would agree with me that it's important to the board that we have an accepting school, an accepting staff and student body here, so just wanted to make sure that they were doing it, that, you know, following it, and, you know, John, if you want to bring it up another time, I, like I said, I read the controversial issue policy, and I personally don't think there's necessarily need to change, and it sounds like that you're following the policy by what you've done, and that's all we expect as a board.
So, it's, it's nice to hear that, sort of, the, you know, the goal was to increase communication to the parents, that was the goal, and that's a laudable goal, it was just maybe misinterpreted, and the fact that we've already had this for a couple of years in some fashion, and people really didn't know about it, I, I think it's, it was a good idea to get this out, and my only goal is this, like I said, this school's for everyone in this community, everyone should be treated with respect, we shouldn't discriminate against anyone's political viewpoint, okay? And there, I've been associated with this community for 40, 50 years, and I know that's happened in the past, and I know it's happened when I was a student here, there's really no place for that. And I trust Kevin, Dr. Skankis, and the administration to keep that in mind, that this community is for Riverside, Brookfield, North Riverside, parts of Lyons, and every student should be welcome, everybody, everybody is treated with respect.
Thank you. Well, it turns out we did have this on the agenda, so we skipped the other section of visitor comments, but our only visitor usually doesn't make comments, do you have any comments today? And so, that brings us to consideration of items for future meetings, does anybody have any items to my right they'd like to?
Nope.
To my left? That brings us to closed session, then, somebody like to make a motion that we move into closed session?
Resolved that the Board of Education, Johnship High School District 2, in Cook County, Illinois, enters, sorry, again, it's hard for me to read, so come away, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Towner, and second by Mr. Smithing. Vote, please.
Ms. Seer?
Yes.
Ms. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Struska?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the end, then we'll move into closed session.